Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and council members. Where is Anne Vibe? Do I see council member Vibe?
Oh, Mayor Gibbons, she's not on the line with us yet.
Thank you. And we will begin the meeting shortly. City manager, would you text council member Vibe and see if she's having trouble getting in?
Absolutely.
I don't have my cellphone with me.
I just texted her also.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and council members. Where is Anne Vibe? Do I see council member Vibe?
Oh, Mayor Gibbons, she's not on the line with us yet.
Thank you. And we will begin the meeting shortly. City manager, would you text council member Vibe and see if she's having trouble getting in?
Absolutely.
I don't have my cellphone with me.
I just texted her also.
How's everybody doing now that it's cool, but it's gonna get warm again? So I think it's been very pleasant weather. How are your allergies doing?
Yeah, I'm not going out a lot.
And we will begin the meeting shortly. City manager, would you text council member Vibe and see if she's having trouble getting in?
Absolutely.
I don't have my cellphone with me.
I just texted her also.
How's everybody doing now that it's cool, but it's gonna get warm again?
So I think it's been very pleasant weather.
How are your allergies doing?
Yeah, I'm not going out a lot. I wonder if Anne's trying the link for 7:30 instead of 5:30.
I think it's the same one, but.
It should be one link.
It is one, okay.
I texted her.
There she is.
Hi, Anne.
Council member Vibe, are you all set? Okay, thank you. All right, good evening, everyone, welcome. This is the study session of the Campbell City Council. And the purpose of the study session is to review the budget as it's being, as we have as a draft. So I will call to order this study session of the City of Campbell City Council on this Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. The study session of the city council meeting is conducted via telecommunications and is compliant with the provisions of the Brown Act and the executive order N 2920, which is issued by the governor. The city council meeting is being livestreamed on channel 26, the city's website and on YouTube. And I would offer that there is a City of Campbell YouTube page. You can't just go in and Google City of Campbell. You need to go into YouTube and get City of Campbell YouTube channel. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, of course. Council member Vibe?
Present.
Council member Landry?
Present.
Council member Lopez?
Present.
Vice Mayor Restonka?
Here.
Mayor Gibbons?
Here, thank you. So this evening, because this is a study session, it has a little bit of a different format. I would like to begin by saying that we've had several meetings, public meetings with staff to discuss the various aspects of putting this budget together. So what you're going to be hearing tonight is the discussion of the draft from the May 11th publication. And please know that all council members value the services and the staff that provide our services to the community, our residents and businesses. And we're all working together to develop the best possible budget for this year and for the following years. So we have a lot on our plate and thank you for joining us. I'd also like to mention that on Thursday, this coming Thursday night, there is another Zoom meeting to provide community input to the budget. And I believe that's at five o'clock. We'll confirm that.
6:00 PM.
6:00, thank you. 6:00 PM on Thursday. And there is a separate announcement for that. Yes, councilwoman Landry?
Uh, for clarification, Brian, it does say on the website in two places, 5:30 and in other places, six o'clock, so we might wanna confirm it's at six.
Um, so Liam, we adjust them, we adjust them, uh, uh, correct. We, we just corrected it.
Okay.
And, and so it, it will indeed be from a six to eight o'clock.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for asking that question.
You're welcome.
Um, all right, um, so what we're going to do is have a public comment. And then staff is going to give, city manager is going to give it an overview. And then after that, the staff members from each department are going to give a brief presentation. They're going to answer four questions that the city manager felt the council would like to have answered as the discussion moves forward. And then we've set up for each council member ideally to have 10 minutes for questions and comments. We're not separating out questions and comments. We're going to be just talking questions and comments. And that should take us to about 7:10, 7:15, and depending on the public comments. And if we can get through the CIP, so much the better, but we may have to come back after the council meeting to finish that discussion. And staff will be giving the CIP presentation after the initial presentation of the work plans and some of the assumptions about the budget. And with that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor stated, this is an ongoing iterative process as we develop and refine the budget. We, we have conducted previous study sessions with the council on these topics. Tonight is the culmination, hopefully, of what we've heard from you. And we intend to reflect that and get your input if we've missed the mark on those things this evening. As part of that iterative process, there is a public workshop Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM for the public to give additional input on that issue. And then any direction that the council gives this evening, as well as the public input that we received Thursday, will be folded into a June 1st budget hearing that we will have to introduce the budget, followed by a June 15th adoption of the budget. So any changes tonight will be reflected in that June 1st revision. But any comments we receive from the public will be presented in the council. We won't assume and making those changes until we report those to you June 1st. Any changes the council wants to make June 1st will be incorporated into the final budget adoption document that will be shared for a June 15th consideration. Okay, so really quick financial overview of where we're at this year. This gives you a slide that shows 2019 to the proposed year. The percent change is the percent changed from what was adopted last year with what was being proposed here. And you can see revenues are up 3% and expenditures are down just slightly at 0.3%. There's a projected surplus with what we're proposing to you today of about $480,000. And it's our recommendation, those reserves, those surpluses be programmed back into the reserves to replace the emergency reserve that was used last fiscal year. This slide just kind of breaks down, it's really easy to see visually, the percentage of both revenues and expenditures. You can see that the green areas are obviously the largest. That's property tax from a revenue perspective, and that's your salaries for your employees on the expenditure side. The next largest revenue and expenditure is sales and use tax on the left pie chart there in blue. And the purchase of supplies and services in blue on the expenditure chart. And then I'm not gonna read all those to you, but you see other taxes there on the left. Revenues at 13% in kind of that yellow color is your third largest revenue. And then benefits are your third largest expenditure on the expenditure side. This chart's really telling, it's something that we've used a lot to try to describe where we've been and where we're going. And we showed this to the council previously. And, and this has changed dramatically with the budget that we're proposing before you today. You'll see annotated here in the middle of the chart there estimated surpluses for fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22. We're just above the red line there, that's where we're currently. And then looking forward to the 2023 budget year, next year. We had originally had shown deficit in excess of $2 million in that fiscal year. This proposal that we're showing you today reduces that future deficit projection to about 500,000. It would be our expectation before we get to next budget year, that would be reduced to zero. But this shows you where we're at in the discussion. Both surpluses for this year and next year, a slight deficit. And then in the out years, just real quick, we can go back to that, Will, one more. In, in the out years, you see that the surplus will grow more dramatically. And I did want to point that out, it's not a level budget going forward. We do project in outer years a bigger surplus.
And Brian, if I may comment, on the 2021 and 2022 fiscal years, that includes nearly $4 million each year of ARP funding. So it is not our normal revenue. It is utilization of nearly $8 million of ARP revenue.
That is correct. All right, next slide, please. All right, so when we talk about our general fund reserves, the blue line is our target. The red line is where we actually are. And you can see that the reserves dropped in the fiscal year 2021. And again, this year, until we recover the use of those reserves that we used last year, the budget that we have is projected to have the reserves meet the expected levels by the fiscal year, in fiscal year '25, almost a fiscal year '26, somewhere between those two fiscal years, we should be meeting our expectations for reserve funding. Okay, just a brief chart on staffing overview. Here, where you see in the second column from the right, the fiscal year 2022 proposed. This is the staffing that we're showing this year. And the rightmost column is the percent change from what was adopted last year. I want to point out to you, even though these percentages are probably greater if you compared it to where we were in 2020. The fiscal year 2021 did do some reductions that are reflected in the fiscal year '21 adopted budget. You can see the total permanent and limited drop from 181 to 173 this current fiscal year. And the total of all positions last year dropped from 236 to 197. So the percent change we're showing you is how much more it's changed from the adopted last year. But I did want to point out that last year's was, was also a reduction. So we're taking a percent change of something that was already reduced. I, I like this chart because it really gives you a visual of where we're going. And if you see nothing more than the, all these, these, the blue, the yellow, the green, all descending as, as you move from left to right across this chart, across the x-axis. And this really reflects what I was saying on that last slide. That, that the green area being our permanent full-time, you see crescendo, its high point in 2020, and has dropped somewhat between 2020 and 2021 fiscal year, and it continues to drop with this budget. Likewise, a more dramatic decrease in staffing with the temporary staffing you see in blue. A more precipitous drop from 2020 to 2021, and then a continued decline, not as steep, from 2021 to this year. I, I think that, that just the volume of that, as you move from left to right in this chart, really demonstrates the reduction overall in staffing and gives you a good feel that those, those numbers are declining, which means a reduction in cost. Okay, so this budget does similarly, it compares this fiscal year, the proposed, the second column from the right, fiscal year 2022 proposed to fiscal year 2021 adopted. The percent change column here, even in a status quo year, I would expect because of healthcare costs, pension costs, and escalating contract costs. This normally, even with status quo, would be typical, you would see about a 3% increase across the board in a normal year. So using that as kind of a judgment tool, you can kind of see where these would lie compared to a normal increase without significantly changing our budget. You see these ranges change from a negative 14% in recreation and community services to a positive 7.2%. I did want to point out that fire services here in the middle of the chart is a significant expense that we contracted with Santa Clara County Fire Department. You see that that expense is a $9.8 million expense, our second largest department expense. And that contract calls for a 3, 3.2% increase. So that, that, when you average it out with the others, is why the total percentage at the bottom there is 0.3%. I think it's really affected in large part by that, by that large number for fire services increasing. Next slide. Here is staffing by department. I showed you a chart earlier on staffing. I'm not gonna go through this, but it shows you by department where it's decreasing. Primarily rec, and community services and community development are the two big reductions here. And then we're gonna move, at this point, probably appropriate to take public comments, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
And before we move to this next slide on city departments, I, I think the idea is we'll go ahead and take public comments.
And if we may, can we go back to one of your last slides? I just want to point out one more thing, which is that when council works with staff on the budget. Can you, somebody call that up?
Will, can you pull up that slide, please?
Across the top there of the column labeled, in the reports that you have in the budget, there's an extra column in there, which goes from fiscal year '21 estimate to fiscal year '21 adopted. So in these presentations, the fiscal year 2021 adopted is the budget that's being compared going forward to fiscal year 2022. And the reason for that, correct staff, correct me if I'm wrong, is because the deficit was so massive in 2021 that it doesn't make sense to give a comparison. So if you're looking at your material, there's an extra column there. We're not using that. So we're going back to fiscal year 2021 adopted to compare it with the trends from fiscal year 19, 2021 to the projected recommended 2022. Okay, thank you for that. And city clerk, may we go to the public at this point? Do we have speakers who would like to enter the conversation?
I guess, ma'am, we have five speakers who have all signed up to speak today.
How many do we have?
We have five who have registered to speak.
Fine, thank you very much. So with that, we'll allow the, each two minutes, that's our standard comment time. And please invite the first person.
Yeah, the first person is gonna be Carly Hasbrook, who is online with us right now.
Hello, Carly.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Carly Hasbrook, and I'm a 10-year resident of the wonderful city of Campbell. Thank you to the council and staff for all of your hard work. I'm here today to comment on the proposed 2022 operating budget and the capital improvement plan. As you know, these proposals reflect the policies, goals and priorities of the city council and community. Due to significant fiscal impacts from the pandemic, the council took corrective measures for fiscal year 2021, including vacancy freezes, staff reductions and budget adjustments, including a $942,000 reduction for recreation and community services. Because parks and other municipal services play a vital role in a healthy community, I would like to see all cuts for public works and RCS restored in the upcoming fiscal year budget. However, I see the city manager recommends that some vacant positions be deferred until 2023, including the following that directly affect my life as a resident. City arborist, park maintenance worker, recreation program coordinator, building inspector and planning technician. I also see that some positions may be permanently eliminated at a time when we need to be creating jobs. Meanwhile, it is proposed that Campbell PD spend $312,000 on a Bearcat armored vehicle. Out of all the big line items for Campbell PD in the budget and the improvement plan, I specifically oppose this Bearcat expenditure. Of course, I want our officers to be safe, but in the rare event the police need an armored vehicle, in my opinion, they can borrow it from one of our neighboring cities such as San Jose, Sunnyvale or Los Gatos. This large and expensive piece of equipment can be shared. Campbell Police Department posted on Nextdoor about using Sunnyvale's Bearcat to successfully serve a search warrant in July of 2020. A perfect illustration of a rare event in which Campbell PD needed an armored vehicle and borrowed it successfully from a neighboring department. We don't need our own, and I urge the council to spend that money investing in our kids, families and infrastructure instead. Thank you.
Thank you, Carly. And city clerk, and I might take a moment to introduce our new city clerk, Dusty Christopherson. So welcome and thank you for assisting this evening.
Thank you. And so our next speaker is Crystal Wellman.
Crystal?
Wellman, and I don't see her online at the moment, so I'll move on to the next speaker who's registered, which is Muffy Waterman.
Muffy, is that correct?
Hi. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are, thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. And I would like to also express my thanks to the council member. I, I know that this has been an extremely rough year. I've been a resident since 95 and long impressed by Campbell's really sound city management and the partnership with the council. So I'm coming from a place of longstanding appreciation. And I'm asking that the council seriously reconsider the purchase of the Bearcat. I'm, I'm troubled that our small town, which has such a, a history of good community feel, would take a step towards a real militarized police department. I think it's out of sync with who we are. And given that budgets do reflect what we value and what we want and the, the community that we want to be, I think that that kind of police equipment and expenditure in a year where we're also talking about really significant cuts to the parks, and the parks are the gem of our community, we know how much they are used intergenerationally. I would just really ask the council to reconsider support for that line item. And in general, to look as carefully as possible at requests from the police department for additional capacity. And I'm thinking about the Mobile Command Center, for example, and really weighing up whether that capacity is needed at a time when we're talking about staff limitations and, and cuts to basic services that, that our community thrives on. So that, I think that was it, but I appreciate your time and I appreciate your commitment to all of us and making Campbell the great community that it has been and hopefully will continue to be.
Thank you, Muffy. I'm, I'm gonna just make a comment here. There will be staff presentations on the departments that will help answer the question about the recreation and community development budget. It is not being cut $900,000, that's from last year's reconciliation. So staff will have a presentation that will help understand what they're doing going forward. There will also be a presentation by staff on the CIP items later on in the evening, probably closer to 7, 7, 7:30, depending. And then we may have to go to an extended study session after the council meeting. So just an FYI for anyone who wants to stick around and hear the full discussion. Thank you. Dusty, our next speaker?
Next speaker registered is Jordan Dancer. But I do not see him online, so I'll move on to the next, next one who's registered. And the next one is Eva Waterman, who is online with us.
Eva?
Hey, yeah, can you guys hear?
You're very faint.
Um, is that any better?
A little.
Okay, sorry, I'll do my best to, to be loud. Um, this is gonna get a little bit repetitive. I'm basically voicing the, the thing that the past two speakers have said. Um, I, I'm a young adult, I'm only 21, I've lived in Campbell my entire life. And I thought y'all had agreed to not do this last year. I thought you'd kind of moved on from thinking about buying the Bearcat. It's really disappointing to me. Um, I've grown up here my entire life, like I already said, I've always felt pretty safe here. And the idea that you're planning to purchase this does not make me feel safe. I want Campbell to be a community where I feel like I- I want Campbell to be a community where I feel like I can walk down the street where my friends and my family do not feel like. The police force is a militarized militia against us. Just, I understand that you want your officers to feel safe, um, but like, uh, like Carly said, like the first speaker said, in whatever case. Like you justify this extreme action, you can go borrow one from San Jose or Los Gatos, like y'all, they're already in the area. It's so expensive, you don't have to cut budget from parks. I just, the, and then the fact that I felt safe here growing up had nothing to do with the Campbell Police Department. And have everything to do with the fact that this is a wonderful community with wonderful people. And I do not understand why you want to arm yourselves against us. So um, I do thank you guys for your time. This is a wonderful town, um, you do wonderful work, and I seriously ask you to reconsider this purchase. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. Much appreciate a young person contributing to the civic discourse. Thank you. And do we have anyone else signed up that's online?
Don't have anybody else that's signed up that's online, but if anybody else would like to speak that I may have missed or has decided to speak now.
Do they do star nine?
There's a raise hand function as well that they can use on their screen to indicate that they'd like to speak, but that was the last of those who have. Registered or online.
Give a moment for people to utilize the system if they can. I don't see any activity.
No, I don't have any raised hands at this point either.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, everyone, and I would encourage you to stay on and listen to the full presentations by each department. And then the discussion about the CIP. Uh, it will help your understanding and perhaps if you wish to join us on Thursday from six to eight. You might have um additional uh comments, uh, so appreciate um and encourage you to stay on. And with that, uh, Brian, I'm going to turn it back to you and have the presentation from staff. And you identified four questions that you'd like each department to answer. And you can see them on your screen. I'll just read them in case someone's listening. One is how do departmental proposals align with a council's six identified strategic priorities? Two, how have council questions, concerns, comments, and directions been addressed? Three, what are noteworthy and important items that may impact the community? And four, is additional council direction requested on any operational area? So with that, um, are we going to begin with the city managers department?
That's correct, Madam Mayor. I'd be glad to leave this off. Um, so in the city managers department, there was a couple of things I wanted to highlight relevant to those questions you just read. Uh, the council has talked about the structure of my department. I, I've discussed at length uh with council. Both uh individually uh and uh at the, at, at budget study sessions. It, um, we, we need to fill some vacancies in my department um to get some stuff done here. And uh, this reflects um that staffing change, the org chart for my department shows the addition of an assistant city manager. Um, that it will be a, a, a classification change from the deputy city manager that, that previously was in this department. Um, the idea is that that, that role will take on some senior leadership in the city. And, and also support a succession planning is another uh comment of the council uh in the past years is uh working to improve. Uh, our succession planning, all of our departments to have a true number two um and put someone in that role that can ascend. So um, this org chart and this budget proposal reflects that. Um, the other thing that is key uh in this is reflecting the work on measure O. Uh, and I know that the staffing that is in the proposed budget shows that we'll be bringing back on a project manager. By mid-year, um, if you look at the staffing chart in my department. Um, I, I, I think that we, uh, we would propose to revise that um from being a point five. Coming in mid-year, I think that position needs to be filled much sooner. Uh, and this chart doesn't reflect that. I wanted to point that out to the council. Uh, it would be my proposal that we begin recruiting for that uh position this summer. Uh, and so in future revisions to this, uh, based on council comment and direction, I would propose. That that, that position be funded more uh quickly. Uh, that is not a generally uh funded through the general fund, uh, that is funded through measure O, so it won't impact our general fund. Calculations that we're showing you, but I believe that's important and that's reflective of the urgency and the priority of that, that item. The other thing I wanted to point out to the council uh quickly here, uh, and is mentioned in the staff report is that we've shown. The economic development department um aligned in the city managers department, we've moved it. Um, we can move it back. Um, the, the, it was shown in the city manager's department based on. Um, a recommendation from the economic development committee that that function be moved into my department. Uh, from community um development. And we can move it back. I wanted to tee up that discussion, get some direction in the council on the appropriate place for that. It's really easy to move back and forth. We've put it here to demonstrate how it could be done. But as important in that discussion is, is, you know, what are we expecting in that role? And whether or not um we need to look at a, a different staffing model or whether or not. Some of that or all of that uh role uh should be contracted out. And if so, what would the scope of that uh look like? Uh, I'd like to get counsel input on that uh this evening. The, I think that's it for the main proposals uh for my department. Um, I, I also wanted to point out that we've moved the city clerk out of my budget as a standalone item. And the city clerk will be addressing um her items, I think, are relative to the council priorities um uh next uh in the, in the presentation. So that's it for my, my presentation. We, we'll move on to the next department.
Yes, thank you, Brian. Dusty. Madam City Clerk.
Yes, I'm here, thank you. Um, so the work plan items assigned to the city clerk's office are all aligned with council priority eight. Community participation and council priority two, financial health. Reorganizing the city government into districts and enhancing services provided by the city's clerk's office, such as the electronic form seven hundred and campaign filings. Um, will improve residents' access to information and improves the staff's ability to manage that information in the most cost-efficient manner. Aligning with again, council priority eight and council priority two. Um, as the city manager mentioned, this year's budget, the city clerk chart was formally moved out from underneath the city manager's department. Um, and has made a standalone department to better fit this organizational structure of the act, of the city. Um, this, in this year's budget, the city clerk has included funding for the consultant um to continue a first priority on the city clerk's. Web, uh, excuse me, work plan, the work on the district boundaries and is working to identify the schedule of activities with a current target to begin council discussions in July. These discussions could include the potential of utilizing community structure to setting these boundaries. And will include conversations around mayorship rotations. So our first council priority then will be the redistricting, um, and then we'll move on to updating the electronic form seven hundred. Process as well as the, the campaign filings, and hopefully that will ease um residents' access to the information and make those more readily available. So that's my brief um update on the work plan from the city clerk's department, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Are there any questions at this time? Being done, we'll move on to the next department, which I believe is Natasha Bissell, uh, acting recreation and community services director.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. So tonight I am um bringing forward the proposal for the recreation and community services department. The focus of this budget and this proposal has been on the council priority of fiscal stability um and cost recovery. So some key points to cover in the proposed budget. First and foremost, the budget still includes an additional twenty-four thousand dollars to supplement seventeen additional meals daily for an entire year. For the senior nutrition program. Um, while this amount does cover the entire year, staff is not anticipating using it as we transition back to an in-person. Um, the county does not allow food uh on a takeaway basis under normal circumstances. This has been something they have waived during COVID. So we're anticipating that going back to an in-person only um meal service. So um, if, if council chooses to not fund this completely, we can modify that as well. Um, I did put this in there as this is in an ongoing priority uh for council throughout this, um, this pandemic. Um, another thing to, to note is that the revenue projections are very conservative through December. Uh, when we were putting these together, we were still um, um, you know, pretty heavy into um high case rates. And all of that has seemed to drop off with the vaccination. So we were very conservative with our growth and um staffing capacity and what we can manage. But you know, we are poised to kind of take on more as that comes. So uh, at mid-year, we will be making adjustments, um, either, you know, increased revenues and the corresponding expenditures um that go along with that. So um, that will come as we, as we know more about our, our participation. Um, another thing to note is that um, council has made it abundantly clear about cost recovery for our department. And while a reduction in force is not easy, um, I did take this time to really focus on what our department can do and change. And how we can um better organize ourselves uh for long-term sustainability. Um, and unfortunately, a reduction in force is something that we um, we can do. And um, it is a way to get, get us closer to cost recovery as a department. And so we, uh, I, I kind of looked at ways to, what are things we can stop doing? What are things we can automate? What are things we can disperse to other employees? Um, and what are things that we can change simply because we've always done them a certain way doesn't mean that we have to continue doing them that way. And so looking for ways to modify um our service delivery. With an organizational chart at the end goal that really aligns our department for good professional growth within our, our department. So that there aren't any gaps in our um, in our org chart. And also so that uh we're, we're, we're nimble and ready to manage in the event of another crisis. And that we can shift positions quickly. We are, you know, at this point, looking to bring back the manager and the coordinator towards the end of this fiscal year and next fiscal year. As we build back our programs, uh, this isn't a turn on the light switch and everything is back to normal for us. This is a slow ramp up as our community members are, you know, feeling comfortable and safe to come back to our programs. As we tran- transition to indoor programming again and things. So it'll be a, a ramp up of services for us um as we move forward. So um, as a department too, one way to view, uh, there has been questions about our cost recovery. And one way to view it is that we have recreation and we have community services. Community services are never going to be cost recovery, it's just not the nature of them. And so the recreation side of our department is what, you know, tends to be covering all direct costs plus some. And so that overall helped our department become more cost recovery. I am not proposing any elimination of services in this proposal. Uh, there are some programs and things that are on pause due to restrictions with COVID. And we will bring them back as time permits and staffing capacities permit. Uh, but there aren't any drastic uh reductions that are being proposed. The desk item that I provided also provides some background and information on cost recovery to the, to the programs that were in question from council. Lastly, the Heritage Theater has been shuttered throughout this entire fiscal year and unable to generate revenue, which has been an ongoing burden um of expenditures. And the city manager and myself, we've been working uh very hard and closely with the, with venue tech, who is our contractor. The agreement um is set to expire at the end of June, and we've um been able to negotiate an amendment to the agreement that provides. Um, a reduction in fees in the event that there is another pub, public health crisis that shutters the building. Uh, for an extended period of time. It also um would require regular check-ins with city council to discuss future funding or ongoing funding of the Heritage Theater if it were to be shuttered again. Uh, or if it continues to be shuttered, um, if there's another ramp up of, of cases. And so they, um, that is another item for council consideration that could be brought back um for further discussion and. Direction for the city manager to extend the agreement. Uh, at that, the, those are the main highlights of the proposal that I have for this evening. I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Uh, thank you, Natasha. Um, I would just ask if you could spend um thirty seconds explaining what was done last year. To reconcile the budget for last year that is not being carried forward. That nine hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, no problem. So um, when we put together budget projections in spring of twenty twenty. Uh, we were very optimistic because we didn't really know what COVID presented itself. And so we had our programs and services coming back to normal by about mid-year. So when we were doing our mid-year adjustments, we were at the height of another shelter in place. Which um reduced our ability to offer programs and services. And um, by doing that, we had a, a significant reduction in revenue. And the nine hundred and forty-two thousand dollars that was referenced earlier was the corresponding expenditures associated with those revenue reductions. For programs and services, we just simply couldn't offer. So it wasn't anything that we chose not to do, it was that we were constrained by the restrictions and the inability to host people on our campus.
And that's not the case in your budget going forward. You are making, I'm going to say, a modest recovery.
Yes, with a pretty full recovery for next summer. So summer programming, um, most of that revenue is actualized in the spring. Uh, at the springtime, so right now we're kind of receiving all the revenue for summer programs in twenty twenty-one. Uh, and so we're anticipating a lot of that revenue being a, a bit more robust next year at this time.
Thank you for that explanation. And uh, council member Lopez, and I didn't know Vice Mayor Resnick also had his hand raised, becomes council member Lopez.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions, uh, Natasha. One is you, you mentioned the org check, uh, org chart. Could you um elaborate a little bit on um, you, you know, how you're gonna optimize? For, you know, some of the opportunities for, for advancement, just some of the curious area of strategic thinking behind some of the reorganization.
Sure, so um, I really believe that when you're, when you have a department um like ours, it's very hands-on with the community. And there's some, some uh positions that are very task-oriented. And um, if you have a gap in your, in your professional growth uh within that organization. It's hard to go from one position to the next because there isn't that intermediate position available to you. So my thought is that as we, you know, through attrition, and it, this isn't going to happen overnight by any stretch of the imagination. But my hope is that moving forward, we have a very robust level of, of positions that can um do, that are doing kind of the programming hands-on work. Then we have the kind of a supervision that kind of turns out, then you have your manager and director. And you know, the hope is that there is, you know, really solid succession planning. That when somebody is out for an extended period of time or is away, that the appropriate level is kind of backfilling during those times. Or you're not um covering for a position that's too far above your abilities. Uh, and it really kind of makes that, that linear progression in your professional growth. And whether people do it in our department, our neighboring agency, or, you know, somewhere else. Um, it's pretty in line with how other recreation and our parks and recreation departments are run. Is that there's that progression in your professional growth, and we're really lacking that. And so I would like to move towards a structure that promotes that. And you know, we several years ago stopped using executive assistants like other departments in our city. And so we're, you know, looking, we have you switched to kind of a part-time basis and are um. We're using those tents as, as needed, and when volume is high, we can kind of build that up. And when it's not so high, we can tone that down, and we have a lot of control over, you know, the staffing costs associated with that. While the, the staff, the full-time employees are focused on the programs and services we're providing.
Thank you, I, I really appreciate that explanation. And, and then I'm, my next question, I'm not sure if it, you know, might, might be you or uh Brian or Will. But I know that at one point, uh, potentially for the theater, we were looking into the use of credible funds. Um, to help cover some of the, the, those costs, that there were funds for uh museums and event spaces and the like. Um, I, I was just curious what the outcome of, of that was, if, if we pursue that, if, if that's still on the table, you know, to just.
Still on the table. We did speak with a specialist from SBA and um. Due to the nature of our arrangement with menu tech, that we don't actually have our full-time employees operating sound booths and working within the theater that it's a contract basis. It's kind of a gray zone, um, so we are moving forward with applying for it, but it's not a guarantee. So we're hopeful and we're gonna do our best, but um, we're. So we're hopeful and we're going to do our best, but we're not certain.
All right, understood. And was the museum not eligible for that process?
Through all the Q and A and the webinars that we participated in with SBA, it was really you needed to focus on one. So if you had multiple things, you kind of had to focus on one thing. And the museum didn't quite qualify because one of the items for outdoor event space, it had to have fixed seating, which the museum does not. And so the theater was the, for lack of a better term, bigger bang for the buck on like kind of moving forward down that path of of looking for some reimbursement.
Great. I appreciate that update. I'm glad it's still on the table. And and thank you for for all the time spent on that. I would just add, if it's helpful and you haven't already, maybe to speak with our representative congressman Anna Schu, who who may have some, may have some advice. Thank you.
Any other council members wishing to speak? Okay. Thank you, Natasha. I think I have one comment that the theater contract was provided in the council's information, and it will be considered at the June first meeting. And if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the finance department. And Will, you're up.
All right. So I I want to thank the council and the the public for attending tonight. It 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 took them a lot of, it took a lot of hard work, teamwork and discussions just to get here. We've, 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 we've still got a, we've still got a. I go. But I I feel a lot better about the where we are today than where we were a year ago. So it's it's due to each department. It's it's due to the people who put, who put a budget together. But it's 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 also due to to the hot thought and the discussions. And also the input that we get from the council along with the public as well. So in in our department, the the key, the key things that that we are, that we will address, really a concern, really concern, I still, a skip, fiscal stability, fiscal, rick, rick, fiscal, a rick, rick. And also, and also hydro, implement, attention. So everything that you that you will see in our, in our hard plan does really address those three. And 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 also based upon what we heard, what we heard from a council in April. We 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 also condensed the hard plan a bit. We took out a a hard plan to address our to to address and improve AP. Because we felt that our time could also be spent, could also be spent in, could also be spent on different and we 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 did try to to really condense what we took on so that we are able to ensure that we do address stability, rick, 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 rick. And also, oh, implement, implement, attention. And in 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 terms of things that will, in in terms of things that will impact the in terms of things that will impact the the public. We we do, we do, we do also propose that we implement a new business, a new business license program. A hire of people will be able to both apply, pay, and also, also renew straight through our, our, straight through the website. Opposed to, opposed to, opposed to, I mean, a coming here in a person to either pay or to apply. The thing that this will also, the thing that this will also do to is, is we'll we'll be able to, to improve the data that we're able to collect. We'll also, we'll also be able to generate a timely, a timely reports and also work have and work with and partner with different apartments so that we're able to see, to see any any or companies in a town that either open or close. And and it 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 will also be a thing that's helpful to council, but also helpful to show us how well that we are able to how well we're able to recover as well. So I think that that's the key things. But I I I also will take our time to address any council questions as well. Thank you so much again. Thank you.
Thank you, Finance Director, Councilwoman Landry and Councilmember Bybee. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. I'm looking online on, I think it's called the Blue Book on ClearGov. And under Finance, there's a spreadsheet breakdown expense. And then it has salaries. And in 2021, the forecast was 1,111,000. And then adopted was only 250,000. And now it's 638 for 2022. And when you look at staffing full-time, it's still 8.8. How did it go from forecasting a million down to adopted of only 251? And then now it's back up to 638?
Okay. So I can, I I cannot tell you that I I I didn't get either 10 or 100% of, 100% of a pay adjustment. But also, also in our department, hey, I'll show what we paid for, what we pay in cash to, so that, so that people in in all departments are 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 able to turn, are able to turn any any unused, any unused vacation time into like cash. It's a, it's a thing that we referred in the current year. But it's a thing that we expect to, it's a thing that we expect to need to pay again in the up, in the up I mean, a year. But to to not only pay it again, but but also to catch up any amount that we The thing that you will also say is, under our apartment, we we typically show a two, a two, a two, a two percent to account for jobs that 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 maybe, that maybe, that maybe open over all departments. We cut it from a two, a percent down, down to a one, a one, a one percent just, just so that we don't count of, I can see a reductions twice. And so it's, it's, it, it, it has some stored our apartment a bit. It it does store our payroll expenses a bit. But again, our our total FFPs are are still on eight, eight, 8.8. And also our, our, our pay is still, is still unchanged as well.
Thank you.
Sure. Oh, bro, you're welcome.
Okay. Let's see. Councilmember Bybee, I believe you have questions.
Hi, Will. Thank you very much for the presentation. Also, thank you for the digital budget book. I have found it much easier to navigate and understand things. And so I appreciate the efforts that you and staff have gone through to create that for this budget cycle. I I just wanted to comment on the business license software. I fully support that. I think it's important that we provide online capabilities for businesses to be able to, well, particularly renew their licenses. And I think that this is a much better approach than a previous recommendation that was kind of discussed about outsourcing business license process. I really feel it's key to our business community to keep it in-house and so that we can provide better customer service and follow up to our customers rather than outsourcing it. So I I appreciate that approach that's being being taken. And I just have one other question. And it relates to the, one of the slides in the very beginning of the presentation on the increases by department. And I noticed that there's an increase of 31% in the finance department. Could you, does that have to do with this software? And or what is the what's driving that big, that change?
Um, so under, under our department, we also pay for, we also pay for, 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 for a few, a non, a few, a non, a a few non-expenses. They, the, 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 expense that we, again, pay is people can convert their unused, their unused of vacation time to vacation time to cash. We, again, we referred in the, earlier, we expect to pay them again in the up a year, but but also to catch up on what we referred. We, 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 we also, again, we show the the two, the two percent of the two, the two, the two percent of I can see right, under our apartment. So we took it from a two percent to a one percent. But the thing that we, the thing that we also pay for from our apartment, our general, our general so just due to the, well, due to COVID, plus the state of the issue cost today, all through the state, all through the country. They, they did jump up. I bought them a one, two, one, two, one, two, one to two hundred, one to two hundred one to two hundred K in total. So it's, it's again, a thing that we pay for from our apartment. We, we, we are under a JPA. But we aren't able to totally control that. So you, you do see a big jump under our apartment. But it's it's really not too Apartment, but it's, it's really, um, not, um, too. Is really a not to pay for our, uh, or, uh, counties, though.
Okay, thank you, Will.
You're welcome. Thank you as well.
I see no other questions, and we will move on to the next group, which is, uh. The Community Development Department, so we have Community Development, Legal, Public Safety, and Public Works. So we will likely go to a session continuation after our council meeting. So, Brian, I believe you're going to do Community Development.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, members of the council. Uh, so Community Development, I'd like to lead off at least, um, with the org chart, um, that was included in the packet. Um, we're going to be make some corrections to that. I think the org chart, um, includes some descriptions of, um, the functions. Uh, that are in the underlying positions. Those aren't positions themselves, so at first blush, when you look at the org chart, it looks like. We have four more positions in that department than we really do. Um, we're going to clean that up. I wanted to point that out to you. Uh, and remove those, uh, from the org chart, um, while still describing, uh, the departments that the staffers are still working in. Um, this reflects, uh, a kind of a consolidated, uh, council direction, uh, consolidating our work effort. Very big priorities from the council, the complete, um, housing element, the general plan, um, our work on objective standards. There was some new, um, work plan items in there, um, to deal with ADUs. Um, specifically looking at programs, uh, to be able to, or ordinances to be able to. Um, uh, regulate and capture potentially revenue from, um, short-term rentals. And then there was a work plan item in there to look at amnesty program for ADUs. I wanted to be clear to the council. That program, uh, would be in compliance with state law. That already allows for pre-existing, um, building, uh, uh, permit. Um, for, for pre-existing ADUs, but it doesn't allow for ADUs where. Um, perhaps it would not have been permitted, um, and were illegally converted. So we're talking, when we talk about amnesty, we're talking about the use. Of the building, legalizing it from a use perspective. We're not waiving building requirements or amnesty from any building requirements. And in fact, those, that, that, those would still be required as part of that process. Uh, from a staffing level, uh, in community development, it's really reflective of where we are with the, the workload that is coming in. Um, we, we still show, um, some vacancies, staying vacant in the inspector position. Um, and the associate planner position, um, we have shown, uh, to come back in January, uh, potentially. Uh, but that is, is still a question mark in my mind, um, as, um, the budget year develops. Uh, that recommendation on the associate planner coming back may change if workload remains low. Uh, we've shown that, uh, to come back, uh, next, uh, January, anticipating. Patient of, uh, the buildup to construction season next spring. Um, but we are still showing senior building inspector, um, being, uh, left vacant. And then here is also where you'll see economic development's been taken out of this department. Um, as I mentioned in the City Management Department, based on council input, that could be easily, um, put back in this. Um, but doesn't dramatically change what we're trying to achieve, um, with, with regard to the general plan, the housing element. Um, the objective standards in ADUs. Um, and, and those are the highlights for community development. I'd be willing to take questions if there is some.
Are there any questions? Council member Lopez.
Um, i- is it appropriate to make a, a comment at this time, Mayor?
Sure, yes.
Um, I'm, I'm supportive because of the transitions and, and leadership that we're going to be having of. At this time, keeping economic development within this department. Um, I, I know there's different o- opinions on that. On the council and I, I'd, I'd welcome that discussion, um, as, as part of these and open to, you know, hearing the case for otherwise, but. Um, I, you know, personally would, uh, think at this point that, you know, I'd like to see us move forward. Um, uh, with, within this department. And, and happy elaborate more or, you know, have more of that discussion, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Sure, thank you for that comment, question, and we'll likely have more of it. Okay, any other comments? Councilwoman Landry?
So is now the time to discuss the?
No, it's basically questions, so. Basically, any clarification or comments, because we're just going to go through the staff presentations. Um, okay. I'm being a little flexible here. All right, if, um, I, um, I have questions, but for, uh, for, uh, later. Okay, um, if there's no other discussion now, we'll go to the legal department and our city attorney, Mr. Sulligman.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Gibbons and members of the council. Um, my, uh, work plan items consist of, uh, eight items. Uh, six of which, uh, address the council priority for comprehensive, long-term land use planning. One of which addresses the council priority for Measure O implementation, and the final one. Deals with working with the city council subcommittee to enhance communications and planning regarding work priorities. Um, of interest to the community, uh, my office will be working with, uh, the Community Development Department. In developing ordinances for expanding vehicle camping to, uh, all public assembly uses. That wish to, wish to offer that, uh, consideration of the ADU amnesty program. And consideration of legalizing short-term residential rentals. And with that, I'd be willing to take any questions.
Thank you. Uh, no immediate questions. We will move on to the presentation by public safety, and that is Chief Burke.
Good evening, Mayor Gibbons and honorable council members. My pleasure to, um, discuss our budgetary proposal with you th- this evening. Um, really, when we entered into this, um, this process, it really was keeping public safety. And that in community engagement at the forefront, so we really evaluated our positions and expenditures. In order to, to keep that high level of service, but while also identifying, um, areas of operational efficiency. That we could, that we could obtain by making slight changes. As you saw last year's budget cycle, we did that by making some personnel changes. And this year, um, we, we have some similar changes, um, that are being proposed. Um, as you have seen, we, uh, we have a slight increase in the executive assistant position and. I think that combined with the freezing of a records specialist position, um, will. Point eight to one, you know, F T E will, um, fill that void for right now as we evaluate whether or not. The, the, the decreased staffing in records is sustainable, long-term. I think that also plays into our. Future conversation tonight about, uh, the C I P request for Axon Officer Safety Plan, which, which also is a way that we're identifying. Some efficiencies that can save on, on personnel. Um, we, as we did last year, we're, um, proposing eliminating a public safety system specialist position. But replacing it with an I T administrator, specific to the police department. As we're moving forward, we, we've identified technology, uh, as being a, a big, uh. A, a big item that needs to be tackled as we move forward, not just, uh, with our existing softwares, but. All the, the requirements being put on us by, by DOJ and, and other state, other, other entities. Um, I, I think it's important to also point out that while it's not a change in this year's budget. Um, last fiscal year, we eliminated the crossing guard positions, and we have. Have found that to not have a huge impact, but with, um, the, the. Um, distance learning coming to an end at the beginning of next school year, uh, most likely, I just wanted to make council aware that. We are not budgeting for those crossing guard positions, so if that's something that the council wants to reevaluate or give guidance on. Um, obviously, um, open to that discussion and, and how we can make that work. And the, the last, uh, personnel item that I wanted to mention that we're still working through, not, uh, in this proposal. But we've identified a, a huge need for a, an emergency manager position within the city. We're actually the only city in Santa Clara County that does not have an emergency manager position. Um, so we're, we're looking at, uh, different options, and my hope is that we can bring that to you. When we come back on, on June first. When it comes to our expenditures. Um, the vast majority of our expenditures are contractually based, which we have really no control on the, the increases. But referencing back to that Axon Officer Safety Plan, a lot of those increases for our CAD and R M S systems. Will be able to, um, get rid of, of tho- those ongoing increases if we decide to enter into this, uh, this contract that will be discussed later. And, uh, the, the only other item of note, uh, and I know the, the mayor has brought this up. This, this, um, budget does not have a line item for cert supplies. Um, that was eliminated in, uh, last fiscal year. And really, at that point, it was the, the requests were for training material, and with the pandemic and no training going on. And we identified that, that, uh, there was, there was ability to save some funds by not purchasing equipment that wasn't going to be used for, for the year. Um, I know that Cert has obtained, uh, grant funding for some equipment on their own. But just to, to highlight that, that there is no, no funding currently, but that, that can be discussed at the council's desire. And I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor Rasnikoff, and then Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you. Uh, Chief, two questions. What was the prior budget for the, um, crossing guards?
Uh, if you give me a second, I can, I can pull that up. In fiscal year twenty, it was a hundred and seven thousand dollars.
And cert, if I remember right, was like, sort of fifteen K grant, was that what it was?
I think back in nineteen, it was ten thousand, and then it was reduced to five hundred thousand.
Okay, and, and, but, and, and some of what that covered, they've gotten grants for so, five K or so might net to what. What would be equivalent to that ten or, or even less than five K. If we net out, they got grants for, but wanted to put it back in. It would be less than we budgeted before because some of it's already been covered. Is that, is that what I heard right?
Uh, I don't have the specifics on what their grant funding. I see the mayor shaking her head, so she may have more.
Okay, but, but now five to ten, five to ten K then was what's been funded in prior years.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And just to, to hit on that, um. Obviously, I've said it before, but we, we continue working with certain, and certain is a valuable part of our, our community, so we're supporting them. Regardless of whether or not there's a line item, and if there was some expenditure that was an emergency purchase, then obviously we would. We would evaluate that and make that happen if necessary.
Councilmember Lopez, uh, Vice Mayor, you're all set, yes? I think the answer is yes. Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you. Um, and the Vice Mayor, I actually had a couple of my questions, so thank you. It, just as a follow-up on the, the cert discussion. Um, I, I know you work closely with the chief. Have you had, uh, any discussions this cycle about what, what those needs might, might be?
Um, there was, uh, a recent cert, uh, annual meeting, and that's where the discussion was on the, on the grant that they obtained. So we are in, in, in communication, regular communication with them. There have been no proposals, um, submitted to us on equipment needs. So as we were going through this process, based, based on those, the lack of requests and the requests that were, were given to us last year. On the training needs, um, that was the, the decision.
Great, um, I, I might encourage you to reach out, um, to, um, see if there, there is a need. And if there, there's not, that's fine, but as the Vice Mayor, uh, point out, maybe, uh, a, a, a lower cost and ultimately not that significant. To, to our budget, so, um, I think that'd be valuable information to have. Um, I'm, I'm, could you also elaborate a little bit on the proposed, uh, new I T position? Uh, the, the thinking strategically behind having that in P D versus, uh, with, with the, uh, regular T department?
Yeah, so I've, I've actually had this conversation with, with our I T manager and, um. There, there are a lot of day-to-day operational I T needs that, uh, that are occurring in the police department. And our I T department, uh, have, has a heavy workload that exists today. So, um, by assigning this I T position directly to our Support Services Division. They'll be able to have that daily, daily, uh, firsthand working knowledge of all of our systems. Be able to identify, proactively identify the problems, um, and work within our department to identify. And where we are, where we need to be with technology. And, uh, I, I think by devoting that resource specifically to the police department. And by removing the public safety system specialist that has some, um, hardware and very minor software responsibilities. We foresee this position taking over those responsibilities, so it fully encompasses all of our hardware and software needs. As, as we move into the future with, uh, future technology changes.
And, and is the techno, are, are the I T needs, um, how specialized is that compared to? What, um, the regular T department might be working with?
Um, well, there's, we do have some very specialized systems that our I T department now i- is familiar with, so. Um, I don't foresee it to be like two separate I T divisions. I foresee this position being a P D position that works with our I T team. Um, and, um. They, they would have that public safety systems knowledge. Whether it's dealing with the, the new digital radio systems, our, our connections to the state DOJ and CLETS. And, um, all, all these other CAD, R M S, and, and Next Gen nine-one-one, and there's a lot of things on the horizon that require. I think a focus and a specialized training that, that is really needed at this point.
I, I appreciate the need for some of that specialized knowledge. Um, I, I think there could be value to having it within I T, even if it's. Uh, specialized or mostly working with P D or, or physically in, in, uh, you know, the, the P D, uh, space. But, um, uh, you know, if there, there is overflow or capacity, or just opportunities for coordination and. Um, any cost savings, uh, maybe benefits, uh, um, having that, that, that cost within, uh, the I T department. But just, uh, uh, some thoughts there would, would welcome any, uh, further, further thoughts, but, uh, thank you. I, I also, because we had, uh, both some, uh, mention in public comments and, and some of the, the emails. Um, could you speak a little bit more about the, uh, the mobile, um, like command center? I know this is in, in C I P. But, um, or I'm, I'm not sure if that would be a, a separate discussion, but just because I think there's public, uh, interest about that.
Um, yeah, I think we were going to do the C I P discussion later, but I'm, if the mayor would like, I'm happy to answer those questions now.
Yeah, I, I, I'm okay with, um, answering, uh, this, uh, chief. Um, it's clarifying that the Mobile Operations Center was funded by a grant from the state legislature. Specifically for, um, emergency services, and that was funded last year or two years ago. You might just provide a little bit of an update to answer that.
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. That was a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the state for emergency services. And we were received authorization from council, I believe it was, uh, two years ago, maybe a little under two years ago. To move forward with the purchase of a mobile emergency operations center, especially with, uh, Measure O and our existing. E O C being at the basement library, we identified the need of, of, of filling that gap, not only for Measure O. But for ongoing, um, operational needs, so we actually have already entered into a contract for that mobile emergency operations. Uh, vehicle, and it is actually in construction now, and we anticipate taking, uh, possession of that probably in the next three months.
And I think there's no city money in. And I think there's no city money involved, and if there's anything that the PD wants, they're getting grants for it. It doesn't involve any city money.
That's correct.
Great. Appreciate the clarification at this time. That's all. Thank you.
All right, next department, Public Works. Todd, you're on the line to be brief.
I've heard that before. Thank you and good evening. So Todd Capurso here from Public Works. Hope everybody's having a great week. I wanted to set a little context for you regarding Public Works. As you know, by checking the budget, we do have a $13 million or approximately a $13 million operating budget. It is worth noting that only about a quarter of that, about 3.5 million comes directly from the general fund. We are largely funded through other funding sources that include the gas tax. A lighting district that we have here in Campbell, impact fees, fees for service and, and, and a community facilities district and, and. Much of those funds are restricted funds and can only be used for the purpose of which they are collected. And so that does feed into our budget strategy and how we help craft our service levels. You will see that the operating budget is going up by 7.2% while the positions are going down. That is largely a function of the fact that Public Works held many positions vacant last year to help reduce the budget gap. We did not take those out of the budget. We held them in there, but we did remove the funding, as you remember those conversations as we had. In the middle and end of last fiscal year and even as we. Even as we begin the budget process for this year. So those positions did include an assistant engineer in Public Works Engineering, which we're proposing to convert to a senior engineering tech. The park supervisor, a parks lead worker, the building supervisor and the line level. Building maintenance worker. And we do have a strategy which is outlined in the, in, in the report of, of the timing of filling those positions. Because we do believe that all those positions are, are critical in different ways. Some provide direct service and help, and some help protect the investment that the city has already made in its infrastructure. Which is actually a cost-effective strategy moving forward. To address the bullet points that are on the slide in front of you, I would like to point out that our proposals do align with the council priorities. Not the least of which is Measure O. As you know, Public Works does play a significant role in helping advance the cause of Measure O. Both in terms of the police building and of the library building as those projects move forward. Also in terms of open space, not only in the, in the renovation and of our open space, our parks and our playgrounds. But also in the maintenance of those facilities and keeping them safe and open. For the community. And also in terms of fiscal, fiscal stability, because as I mentioned. Many of these assets were a significant investment on the part of the city. And the, the better job that we do as a city in providing preventive maintenance, we help extend the. Useful life of those assets and increase the usability to our residents as well. Adjustments that have been made since the last round of meetings. There are some significant items in the CIP which we will speak about later. But I do mention the CIP now because some of the increases in the CIP. Do have a direct impact on how we propose staffing, the engineering side of Public Works, because for the number of projects that will move forward. We will need project managers, we'll, we'll need design services and we will need inspection services. Also, we are, that strategy does roll into how we maintain our infrastructure. Not all of our projects are building new things. A lot of our projects are maintaining existing assets. Not the least of which is our city's extensive roadway system. We are looking at ways to be efficient, how we can cross-train particularly in some of our operational areas, so you'll see. Actually, maybe what you won't see in the, in the org charts, but what you will see in practice. Is, is that positions will be cross-trained against a variety of sections so that. The street maintenance crew can help with the parks crew and vice versa, the same with the building crew. And so we are really looking at how we can provide maximum flexibility to help the changing needs. Of the city, which has, which has been particularly challenging over the last 14 months, as you know. The service level adjustments have been a moving target. So over the last year, that is why we have been able to make such significant savings by holding positions vacant. Because of some of the restrictions that you heard Natasha talk about also. Also impacted the, the level of use in parks and some of our facilities. With the, those restrictions being eased, we are seeing significant impacts to, to our public facilities, particularly in parks. And we will wanna increase our maintenance levels back to where they were prior to the pandemic. And then in terms of noteworthy and important items that are impactful to the community. As mentioned before, we will continue to advance both the police building and the library project as part of Measure O. We will continue to provide maintenance services to our streets, so you'll see an annual street maintenance project every year in the CIP. We have some significant park and playground renovations occurring. We'll have the John D. Morgan Project closing out early in the next fiscal year. And at that same, approximately that same time, we'll take down the Campbell Park Playground area and start our renovation out there as well. But then also on more of a community, on a localized community basis, you'll see a variety. Of bicycle pedestrian improvements and, and traffic safety, which includes traffic calming, by the way. And so that concludes my remarks. At this point, happy to answer clarifying questions or any other inquiries the council has. Thank you.
Okay. I, I will hold my comments to the end. And if there's no other comments. All right, council members, it is now five after seven. Shall we begin our conversation about what we've heard and answer staff questions? Or, or shall we adjourn until after the council meeting? My question is the stop and start. Are people comfortable spending another 10 minutes? Or shall we just take a break and, and go to the council meeting at 7:30? Councilwoman Landry?
I see a fairly good conversation based on questions that have already been asked and. My preference would be to do it all contiguousy instead of breaking it up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I think you were saying postpone now and move to come back after the council meeting.
I, 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 I don't think we should be rushing the conversation. And based on the time, it's gonna go past 20 minutes of a conversation.
That's right. We'll be pressed, we'll be pressed. Okay, so if no one has any objection, we'll adjourn the study session to follow the council meeting at 7:30. The agenda is fairly brief, I think, so hopefully we'll be reconvening maybe 8:30, if not, if not sooner. That makes sense for anybody?
So we stay.
Same, same link, everything, yes.
Okay, so just mute and turn video off.
Yes. Okay, Councilmember Lively?
I was just gonna ask, is there a certain timeframe that we're. Going to be allowing for the continued discussion and then getting into the CIP?
So I had a budgeted 10 minutes for every council member. Previous to this discussion, staff presentations took a little longer than I had budgeted with the city manager. So I will give a time limit to that.
Because I, I wasn't expecting to continue after the council meeting, so I, I'm a little surprised at that. Is there any way we could start with the CIP discussion or? I mean, now we're wasting 20 minutes. In between meetings.
Well, I, I was deliberately not asking any of my questions. I was holding everything. I don't know how many other people have follow-up questions.
Then if you have questions, why don't you ask them now so that we get them out of the way?
Okay, I, I can do that perhaps. And the other thing is that we need to answer the questions that staff has asked us. So maybe it might be productive to start answering those questions and see where we stand with those. That might be the best use of the time. So I have. A question from the city manager about economic development. The, I would offer Councilwoman Landry and I are part of the Economic Development Subcommittee, and you may speak to where we think. That group should go. Councilwoman Landry?
Caught me off guard there. Yes, so we met and discussed at length as a subcommittee what economic development is. What we can do for the community, what we can do for businesses. And based on that conversation. Liz and I discussed that maybe we should be bringing in a consulting firm. That has a higher level of range of experience in economic recovery. And that. It just seems like we need a little bigger guns going forward for this.
And, and I, I agree with that. We, we thought it was a more productive solution. And one that could be turned it on and off as the circumstances warrant. And given the magnitude of the pandemic impact on business, we thought professional assistance would be of more value.
And I think we did discuss putting it under the city manager's office, especially as a consultant. It seemed a better place than in the community development.
So I know Councilmember Lopez thought it would be okay to leave it in, leave it in community development. The recommendation from the subcommittee is to move it to the city manager's office. Vice Mayor Rasnikoff?
So obviously, we're not privy to that whole conversation. I mean, my inclination. Is to leave it where it is now too, for, for, for the reason of. I think we have to define what it is before we know where it belongs. It, it may belong under the new community development director, it may belong under the city manager. I'm not sure that there's agreement as to what. The function should be. And who's doing it in-house, consultant, whatever. So. I, I don't, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think we, we have feedback other than a few comments from the subcommittee as to why. You came to that conclusion and what alternatives we have. So I think, I think defining what it is will define where it goes. Maybe with the input of the new community development director, but I think there has to be a discussion about that. It's probably lengthier than a couple of minutes right now.
It may fair to say, but the purpose of the Economic Development Subcommittee is to provide recommendation to the council as a whole. And we, and we did do that. We, we spent a great deal of time with the city man, not a great deal, and we spent a reasonable discussion and time with the city manager. On how to move forward. So we, we believe we met our obligation to the.
I'm not, I'm not saying you didn't recommending, I think that it's fair to understand how we got to the recommendations, I think. Maybe, maybe others disagree, but. I'm in favor of. Leaving it where it is until I know what it is.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I appreciate the committees, subcommittees' work and research that went into that. It's the first that I'm hearing of potentially having that be a consultant. So I'm, I'm open to learning more about what, what that'll look like, what, what's out there. But I, I, I do think especially if it's an employee, just for management chain of command. Makes sense to, to, to keep it where it is, but. Open to, to learning more about. You know, the committee's thinking.
Okay. Any thoughts, Councilmember Bobby, and then I'll go back to Councilwoman Landry?
I think it makes sense actually to move it to the city manager's office now. For a couple of reasons. There is gonna be a change in, in community development with the new director. And I, I think it's a better opportunity to be, have it managed. Currently by the city manager and there's a subcommittee that's involved with this and there's direct, direct links there to, to the city manager and discussions. And. It would give the new, new director some time to kind of get his feet wet and deal with things that are. Probably maybe a higher priority while, while it's evaluated by the council. I, I think it's worth bringing it to the council for discussion. I, I've heard other. Suggestions that it'd be contracted out as well, so. I, I think that we need to have a greater, broader discussion on it than just. Hearing little tidbits of what the subcommittee recommended without having the, the whole picture. But I don't see it being a problem moving it into the city manager's office for the interim because it's easy enough to move back. And, and a lot of cities, their economic development person is in the city manager's office and it is managed by the city manager's office.
So yes, I think the Economic Development Committee did not. Define what the economic development would be going forward, but felt that it would be better served being in the city manager's office. And had more flexibility for being outsourced and directed. That was not a recommendation to preclude council discussion on it. This is just answering where it would be better served in the structure of the organization, and that was the question we were answering at the time.
And, and I'll comment, we did, at the end of one of the council meetings on committee reports. We did say that, that we did discuss contracting out the services to bring in a high level of expertise. And another firm, so that was discussed. We didn't get into detail about it. But we did bring that up as our, part of our report that we made. And I do hear what Vice Mayor said about. Until we can define more what it is, what department to put in. But at the same time, we have a new community development director starting on June 1st. He's gotta get his feet wet and get thrown in the fire and, but at the same time, we're opening up. And we need recovery, so that's why I felt moving it over to the city manager for now. It can be moved back, but I hear your concerns, Paul. About, we don't know yet the position, so where does it go? But I say. Move it in city manager, get a better head start on it and have a better, bigger council discussion of what this position really is.
Real fast, I'm certainly less concerned about where it moves now than what, what is it. So then, so, given the choice, reporting to the city manager is fine to me. Or not, but I think there has to be a discussion of what we want to do. There aren't different options we could do. I'm okay with that.
And, and I, I just want to clarify, I, I apologize if I missed or overlooked that, that report. I, I certainly didn't mean to imply that there's anything secretive, just that. I didn't have time to give it full consideration, so that's all where I was coming from, but do appreciate the subcommittee's work.
You're allowed to give due consideration. Okay, so I have asked staff, I went through a series of questions. And I had asked staff to take another look at the city manager's budget just to make sure that the full amount for the city clerk had been withdrawn from it. So because it now has its own budget. I also was questioning the full amount for economic development because it identified only. One staff person, I think, not the work that was done by the community development director and all of that got kind of co-mingled, so I just was asking that. And the other one that I thought was important, and two others I thought were important. Let's see, I'm, I'm digressing here, but I'll finish my thought. Was that communications has been an issue for us for a long time. And we have said that we need a communications PIC role. The social media communication position has been absorbed by PD. And it's been very effective, but it has not addressed the need of the city. So we have asked. For the last two years to have a more solid communication role for the city. And I didn't see that in the city manager's budget. And I wanted to suggest that we clarify that.
If I, if I could, Madam Mayor, in clarifying that, I think that's one of the roles we were looking at for the ACM position to pick up some of that.
I'm sorry, for what?
For the Assistant City Manager position to take on some of that role. If we can get the right person with some of those skills as well, and that was the, the concept behind that.
All right. I would offer for people who didn't know, because I did not. When we make, one of the things that I was trying to do was make sure the community had a lot of information on our webpage. About financial resources to recover for rent and utilities and different things. And I was told that. And I was told that it was being done by the staff person in the police department, and I was very surprised. I thought IT kept up our webpage. And they don't. So there seems to be some learning curves going on and how to maintain the webpage for all departments. And to maintain a a public information officer and to do our social media. So all of that needs to be understood and addressed. So. I I would just ask staff prior to the June first meeting to take a good look at how we're going to handle that. I'm not so sure that the Assistant City Manager can do everything the position needs for Brian as well as all of that, but staff can take a look at it. Councilmember Lopez?
And and I I did, I'm not sure if now is the time or, you know, later tonight or at a later meeting, but. I I would like to hear more about the strategic thinking behind the Assistant City Manager position. Would would be great to get some more information around that.
I concur with that. Thank you for mentioning that. Okay, and then. The strategic plan update, I didn't see on the work plan list for the city manager's office. We had talked about, it hasn't been updated since nineteen ninety nine. So I think it needs a good looking at. So I would offer and ask the city manager to take a look at that. Okay, and I'll offer one more comment that will move the conversation along, and then we will stop in one minute. And the city clerk, I wasn't totally clear on why the city clerk's budget went up ten point seven percent. So it's one of those things that triggered my comment about what was the full reduction in the city manager's office and what was going into the city clerk. I didn't, I couldn't rationalize the two numbers. Anybody have any last minute comments, perhaps just on the city manager or city clerks items? No? Okay, so let's take a break and we will come back. Thank you.